Good afternoon. I'd like to call the Putnam County Board of County Commissioners Transportation Workshop to order for Tuesday, May 24th, 2022. I can welcome everybody here this afternoon. We'll begin the meeting with the invocation given by Commissioner Harvey. And Commissioner Turner will lead us in the pledge. Please stand if you're able.
Let us power heads. Gracious heavenly Father, we thank you for this day, a day we've never experienced before in our life. A day, Father, that we can call upon you for wisdom and direction. We can move this county forward. Give us all wisdom directly from your throne room. Let us debate and let us come together, Father, as a further in our county. We thank you for all the good things and all the things you do for us, Father. We thank you that we can call upon your name in a free land. In Christ's name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Please join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioner Harvey and Commissioner Turner. We'll move down to item two, public comment on agenda items. This portion of the agenda is designed to allow citizens an opportunity to bring matters to the attention of the board. It's not reasonable to expect that the board will engage in debate or deliberation about matters in which the board has received no prior information. Any individuals wishing to make comment on agenda items? Okay, seeing none, we'll move forward to the agenda. They've been asked to swap this large agenda around a little bit, and so we're going to move item B up first and have Public Works vacate or purchase of the land on Finnegan Road discussion. So who's taking that from Public Works?
Mike and Mike.
Mike and Mike.
Or Forest.
Here we have an issue for Finnegan Road to discuss the selling of a portion of the cul-de-sac. Here's some narrative here in the agenda item proposed by the property owner that's impacted with this current situation.
What was the last part?
The property owner has proposed an option here to possibly purchase a portion of the cul-de-sac.
Okay, so what he's offering is to purchase roughly 4,000 square feet for a price of $1,500. Is that what I get out of this?
Yes, sir, that's correct.
Yeah, Commissioner Turner?
Thought we discussed this last few, a couple of meetings ago or last meeting or whatever, and we talked about maybe giving him an easement with the attached to it that if we ever brought sewer service to the area, that that would, property would have to tie onto the sewer service. At what time, it could be never, but I mean sometime down the road. How did we, did they turn down that offer?
Well, they're presenting this as another option. It's our understanding that they would like to proceed forward with selling the property.
Their option, but they'd like to buy public lands for $1,500, but I don't know that that's the option for or not. I mean, I thought we had this kind of worked out where we were going to try to give them an easement to where it'd get them through the Health Department and they could go on and sell their property or do whatever they wanted to with the caveat that they had, that the new people had to tie on to the sewer system if and when it ever came to that, down that road.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Harvey.
I think the conversation went a little bit further beyond that, and Mr. Fields might be able to explain, but the board was looking at maybe not giving the easement and maybe purchasing property based on some other areas that had to purchase property from us before. Is that, am I correct on that, Mr. Fields?
There was two options. One would be the easement. The other option was, I know you had a concern about staying in line with what has happened in the past on other parcels that have been purchased before. The easement would give the permit for the septic. However, there's, in the conversation, there was also brought up that by doing, by the homeowner purchasing the property, that it would also alleviate any future problems with the home sitting inches on the cul-de-sac line.
But if the easement followed the land from now on until such time as they brought it down the road, if it ever sold in the future, they'd be under the same circumstance with the easement. It'd be no different than the easement coming into a home for access.
Yeah, the easement would absolve, the way it was presented was the easement would absolve.
Can you come through the microphone so everybody can hear, because this has been taped?
The easement would be absolved at point that the sewer, if sewer were ever run.
We don't have to.
Oh, it can run forever and with the caveat that they have to tie on at some point to the sewer if it ever comes down that road. I doubt it will in any of our lifetime, but if it ever did, that would give them that option to tie on, but I mean I.
Would the easement be the easement of that, the square footage that was laid out in the survey?
Pretty much, yeah, pretty much the same thing that they're wanting to buy, purchase from us. We'd just give them an easement on that property and it would follow the property from now on. I mean easements don't go away at the end of a sale or something unless you word them that they go away at the end of a sale.
Right. The understanding was at the last meeting that if we did an easement, it would be for the sewer and once sewer connected, the easement would absolve. But if we can do the easement on that amount of square footage of the cul-de-sac.
Why would they need it if we ever did do a sewer in the future? Why would they need it then for the drain field?
They wouldn't, the septic and drain field would be absolved at that point. There would be sewer, but the house still sits within an inch or two of the cul-de-sac. So if the county ever in the future came and paved, whoever owns the property at that point in time would still have a problem. The county and the homeowner have to work out.
So we still need to let the easement follow even if the sewer's hooked up in the future is what you're telling me?
I would think so.
I'm sorry, they could ask for a variance for the setbacks on that. They don't have to have an easement based on where the, where the home's situated.
But it really wouldn't harm anything to let them have an easement on the, easement on that property, would it? I mean, they've got to give it to them anyhow for the, for the sewer, for them to be able to market the property. So we give them an easement on it, that would still settle the whole case, I would think, as long as the easement stayed in place.
Commissioner Harvey, still have a floor? You're good?
I'm sorry, I, we had just under discussion.
Yeah, we were. Okay, Commissioner Rawls?
Don't they, don't they have an exemption for the house to be sitting where it is now anyways?
Not that I'm aware of.
I thought it was part of the discussion last time.
It was permitted, but I believe that there was not a survey required to do the site plan. I think it was a mess-up oversight on the site plan when the house was originally installed by the previous owner.
I also think it was determined last time around that the site plan was drawn inaccurately that was turned in. And so, you know, a building official doesn't have the ability to go out there and start measuring from a certain point to see where it is. They can only take somebody's basic word for where the property line is. So, you know, years pass, so.
I agree with Commissioner Turner. I think it's a slippery slope and, you know, we don't have this happen. This is the first time since I've been elected. Maybe it never happens again, but it's one of the situations where we're opening Pandora's box for anybody that might have an issue where they're encroaching, whether it's public land or private land. How did you come up with $1,500 for 4,000 square feet?
I just, I put some comps in there.
In some counties, like if you go to Clayton, San Johnstown, you don't have to, you'll get a 6,000 square foot lot for $70,000 to $100,000.
Well, there's been, I pulled vacant land sales in the Satsuma area and broke it down to a dollar per square foot and then calculated by the square footage that's in question.
It's $4,000. You're offering a third of that. So I, I would be inclined to do an easement. I don't think you should be selling public land.
As long as it stays with the life of the property where the house don't become a problem for marketability, that's, I'm sure the homeowner's fine with it.
Is this an invested property or a home?
No, he lived there, but then he's got married and moved up north, so now he's selling the property.
He's selling the property.
Yeah. He did rent it for about a year because the market wasn't great. He's owned it 12, 15 years, something like that.
And then the new owner is fine if we have an easement?
Well, we don't have a buyer yet. It hasn't been on the market because it's not marketable at the point, at this point.
I'm good. I'm in favor of the easement.
Thank you. Commissioner Harvey, then we'll go to Commissioner, you're good. Commissioner Adams Act?
Okay, Rawls, favor?
All right, do we need, I guess, a motion to this effect?
Does it go to consent agenda or do we want to move it forward? I mean, it's already been to the regular board or was that at a workshop that we heard at last?
I think it was at the workshop.
I think it was a workshop.
Probably this needs to go to the consent agenda at the next meeting.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we move this to the consent agenda and allow the easement to be on this property to run with the land in perpetuity.
I'll second that.
Okay, you got a proper motion and a proper second. I'm going to go under discussion. Commissioner Adams Act?
Rich, is there any cost to the county to do an easement legally or any?
So you already have the legal description? I mean, there's probably a nominal recording fee, but other than that, no?
Okay, is there a particular, I guess, size of this easement? How does that determine? So that's what it is already drawn out? Okay. What he's asking for in the purchase of the property is the same thing? Okay, all right. Okay, all right, any further discussion? This is to move this to the consent agenda, correct? To be voted on, and that would be the June 14th meeting, probably. Okay. All right, all in favor, if you could sing aye?
Aye.
Pose same sign. Okay. Thank you. Okay, we'll move up to item A, information and technology, virtual environment infrastructure replacement. Mr. James Ritchie and Sarah, Tyrone? I guess, I guess you're on your own.
Were you able to get a hold of anybody to find out there had to be any money down?
Yes, sir, and there doesn't have to be.
Okay, so, you know, we can hear a long presentation, but if we didn't read our packet or whatever, but this is something we need and we need to move forward. And the biggest issue here is, is that basically it's just a matter of where or when we pay for it. So my suggestion at this point would be to go ahead and tell them to order the thing. If it comes within this budget year, we pay it out of reserves. If it comes within next budget year, we pay it, we budget the item for next budget year out of their, and add it to their budget. I mean, it's pretty, we got to have this, guys. I mean, I think so.
I think that our discussion is just something we got to have. If we don't at least get a placeholder mark in line, we're just going to continue to be behind, so.
Hopefully we have the problem that it comes early, but I got a very strange feeling this is going to be like that other one we ordered back in October that we all, we have a ship date on for September of this year.
Yes, sir.
So a year. So I got an idea this is going to be one of them. So I say we go ahead and tell them to order the thing and we'll figure out, we'll budget it for next budget year. And then I don't think it's going to be an issue, but if it happens that we get lucky and it comes this year, we'll pay for it out of reserves this year.
I second that.
So that's a motion, that's a second. Okay. All right, we got a proper motion and got a proper second to go ahead and purchase, order the, the, the equipment, and then if it comes in this budget year, we'll pay it out of reserves. If not, we'll put it in next year as a budgeted item. Okay, under discussion, Commissioner Rawls?
If we didn't go this direction, what are our options?
If you didn't go this direction, you're looking, you're just really a gambling game, critical infrastructure failing.
No, I'm saying, what are, what are other options? When you and I were speaking the other day, we discussed options.
Right, so we've got, you have the option of the Nutanix stack, which is our recommendation, or the VX rail option. There's a third option we've got. It's a, it's a self-engineered, in-house engineered solution, which personally I don't recommend that, not because I don't think we could do it, but for the support feature of it for future proofing the infrastructure. But we could go, we could definitely do that route, but that would be your other option.
What about off-site?
You're looking at tremendous amount of money. I mean, it's.
What is the, I have people tell me all the time, this is going to cost a lot. I don't know how to quantify tremendous amount. Have we ever looked at that? And I mean, we're looking at buying a piece of equipment that one day will be right back where we are today. And I personally don't like responding to emergencies. You know, come in, we have, we have a fire. We have to put out right this second and we have to spend this money. So our backs are pinned up against the wall because we're not being proactive. I'm just wondering, is there something we can be doing right now over here to be proactive and not be as reactive, especially when it comes to IT? Because this is the second time we've dealt with, with critical issues this year with IT, if not third. So what are, the other day when you and I were talking, we talked about off-site.
So with, I mean, you're looking at, I believe our entire infrastructure as a whole, we're looking at a little over 100 terabytes of storage. You know, there's obviously setup, you go to the, you know, Amazon's web services option. Like I said, I'd have, we'd have to run the numbers to see what, what cost would come back, but it would be a, it'd be rather expensive, you know, and I don't, like I can't give you a number.
Are we, are we not looking at everything until Italian, guys, we've looked at everything we can possibly look at and here are the options and this is the, the most palatable or the least expensive? I'm not necessarily looking for least expensive. I'm looking for what's going to be the most productive and what's going to last the longest and serve our customers the best.
Sure. So those questions, you know, I've, it was been my, my direction and direction to my staff for us to become proactive instead of reactive. And we've operated that way for a while, but, and there's many ways we're fixing that. With a new stack, with this Nutanix stack, it's a five-year maintenance plan with it, which would need to be renewed in the five years period. But from, with a system engineer that we've, we talked to, they have told us that at the end of, you know, that five years, we could actually budget for another node. So our stack is continuously being refreshed, so we're not having to worry about hardware failures and that. So it kind of sets us up to be proactive in that way, to replace the hardware side of it. I mean, that's, when you say off-site, I mean, that's certainly an option. I mean, we're going to eventually go in the next, I believe it's three years, if I'm not mistaken, to either 365 or, you know, G suite or whatever's, you know, with prices come back at that point. So that'll take a big burden off of the infrastructure here because it will be truly cloud-based, you know, on the internet and Google servers or Microsoft servers or whatever. It's just the storage and the bandwidth that we would eat up for the county because of how much we actually have and need to transport back and forth from here to wherever, you know, and if, is it, you know, geodiverse, you know, all those factors really play into that. You know, it's, it's more than just a bill to Amazon or whatever. You're looking at your internet bill increasing tremendously because of the amount of data we actually have that's passed through this county every day. And that's, you know, so we are, but to answer your question, we are, we have looked at all those options and this is the most, in my opinion, the most financially responsible one to do just simply because of how expensive it is to truly go cloud-based with the infrastructure that we have in place.
So if we're, if we're looking to go in cloud-based in three years, what will be the difference three years from now? What, you think it'll be, the cost will be down or what's the?
Things are just going up, Commissioner, to be honest with you. I mean, Microsoft just done a, an increase in their prices and that, they're probably on tap to do it again in the next three years. Now, for to go cloud-based, you're looking at simply just email. All right, so that's, email's going cloud-based. All of our document storage, all of the clerk record and, you know, there's some, we have some servers running as far as tax collectors. Well, for all the constitutuals for that matter, that would have to be housed here. Some, some data cannot be stored in Amazon because they're not CGIS compliant. You know, if we'd have to, if we went that way, we'd have to find another, another option for that. And there's a lot of factors that we've, we've really dove into and tried to, tried to figure out. And like I said, to keep it in-house is the cheapest option to go. And it's just being, like you said, being proactive and saying, I know that, you know, in five years, I'm going to have to replace this and we're going to have to budget for it. And talking with administration, they're fully, you know, agree with that and support us 100% behind that, so.
So we're going to budget for long-term?
Sure, absolutely. Yeah, we've, there's, we have a plan now. We have, we have a plan that we're working out for the next, you know, five years, seven years. We've, I've, we've looking, we're looking down the portals of time in that way for sure.
Can we get a copy of that?
We can, when we finish it, we can definitely do that. We've got timelines and stuff like that, Gantt charts and things of that nature.
That would definitely be settling to me because I, we haven't been in, in that world in a long time, so, okay. I'm good.
Commissioner Adams Act?
When they say dedicated support staff, describe that to me.
We have, we'll have on-call the system engineer that designed our system and a, and a support staff behind him as well. So if there's anything in the virtual environment world that the servers are acting a certain way that's unexpected to us and whatever, we, our sysadmin, me or assistant IT director, they can give a call to a, a, our person, our system admin, our system engineer and be able, they'll be able to remote in and have access to that instantaneously and their staff as well.
The systems engineer's not a pre-sales person, he's a post-sale, he's a support person?
Right.
And then by 99.9% uptime, how are they guaranteeing that? Are they giving you a service level agreement?
They have, yes. So if when we call, that they'll be on, you know, if something does happen or whatever, they'll be.
No, the uptime, you said 99.9% uptime.
That's their, that's their, that's through upgrades and things of that nature when they're upgrading the platform. Because we don't have to handle that on the virtual platform itself. They'll actually take that on as part of the, the agreement to upgrade and they're guaranteed, well, 99.999% or whatever, that's their guarantee that the virtual environment will not go down.
That's not avoiding failures, that's just uptime because they can do online upgrades and things like that.
Right.
Thanks.
Okay, any more questions? Okay, you got a proper motion, a proper second. All in favor, if you could sing aye?
Aye.
Pose same sign. Okay. All right, Mr. Ritchie, thank you.
You did pretty good on it, though.
Administrator Suggs?
Yeah, just real quick, just real quick, Mr. Chairman. It would be remiss of me if I didn't say, give a shout out to Commissioner Adams Act, the Honorable Matt Reynolds and the Honorable Linda Myers who are here today. They all sit on the IT Stakeholder Committee and they've been very supportive and very communicative on what our, our needs are. I see they're both here today and I just want to say personally, thank you for both of them being here today for this, this item on the agenda.
Okay, thank you. Would y'all like to make any comments? I was going to ask if y'all, if y'all would, yes, ma'am.
We would have let you go on with your business because we know you probably have a bigger agenda than what I'm looking at. Always things on your plate. We are, and I'm sure I speak for the constitutional officers, we know how tough it is for you to find and prioritize and spend. There's lots of needs, limited resources, there always will be. However, the support of the IT department, which is the backbone, as you know, of all of us. And as we approach that tax deeds, that tax certificate sale next Wednesday, we cannot be down. So we thank you for and appreciate the recognition and support that the IT department has from the five of you and of course, administration as well. Thank you again, Mr. Suggs, for your comments and we are glad to be part of the team.
Okay.
With that, I'm going to let you go on to your business.
Okay, thank you, Ms., thank you, Ms. Linda. Okay. Okay, any more agenda items? Somebody going to sneak something in? That's it? Okay, all right, we'll move down to Commissioner comments. Commissioner Adams Act?
I guess I've been having some conversation with attorney on House Bill 7049. I guess there's a process if we chose to, and I guess, Rich, if you could expand on it, to pursue that where basically we take our, our public notices online and take it, instead of going to the paper. I'd be interested to know if we could, I guess, Mr. Suggs, if you could find this out, what the subscription is, how many subscribers actually get the paper? Because part of that is, requires that we get a similar amount of exposure, is my understanding, to what the paper would get, which I think on Facebook, there's 55,000 adults on Facebook in Putnam County. I know that for a fact. So I think we have a further possibility of reaching more people that way and I think it would be a cost savings potentially to the county. So I just want to see what we need to do to move that forward, if that's the interest of the commission, to pursue finding out more about how we would do that. I think there's a process to it that we'd have to follow as a, as a county if we decide to go that way. And just wanted to bring that up because the governor did sign that into law, I think about a week and a half ago.
Okay.
Just look into it? It's more than a commissioner comment at the end of a meeting to decide whether or not you're going to, a lot of people that aren't on the internet at all in this county, believe it or not, still read the newspaper.
That was actually what Commissioner Adams Act and I were talking about, and it was actually my suggestion that he bring it up during comments just to get some sentiment from the board as to if you wanted to move forward with that.
It's definitely a good discussion to have, but I just don't think we need to have it at the end of commissioner comment. I think it needs to be an agenda workshop item.
Yes, sir, that's all we are asking. Yes, sir, that's all we are asking for, is do you want to see it on a workshop coming through?
Okay.
And there's some, exactly your point, part of the bill, or part of the new law, requires the local government to make a determination that sufficient portion of your constituents have the ability to access the internet where these notices would be published. So you're intuitively on the right track. That's what we should talk about if we have it in a workshop.
And I wasn't looking for action, I was just looking to agree that we can bring it forward in the future. I had, I had the opportunity, I guess, this morning to, I apologize for not being here, but I just wanted to take note. There's a lot of really fantastic people in this county, and it's everywhere in this county. And just for all of us here and everywhere, you know, there's a lot of elderly people in Putnam County. It's almost like a retirement county, if you really look at the numbers and how the census data comes out. There's a lot more people between 50 and 90 than there are younger. And it's an interesting dichotomy, because you think about this county as being a younger person's outdoorsy-type county, and it really doesn't add up that way. I guess I just want to take the opportunity to say that, you know, we've been losing a lot of people in this county, elderly people and younger people, too. And I guess just remember to have those relationships with your neighbors and things like that, and, you know, we all love our neighbors, we all love each other. It's, you know, even when we disagree, in the end, we come back together. And just a really special woman in West Putnam passed away last week, and Ms. McClellan, and just, she's gonna be missed, and she's just one of those people that smiled every time you saw her at church, or if you're in the neighborhood. And just want to make note of that, not just for her, for all the people that we have that kind of, I've found now that I'm getting older, that I'm taking for granted some of those people that I know and I meet, and maybe don't reach out to them as much as I should. So just for everyone, if you got those neighbors and stuff, try to stop by their house and say hi, and check in on them, and things like that, so. That's all. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Adams, Zach. Commissioner Turner?
I have nothing further to add to that.
Commissioner Harvey?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I got two things I want to bring up. One, I sent an email. The little boy that got hit by the car was on Tinsley Road, and the father has reached out to me to see if we couldn't change the speed limit on that road. So if it pleases the board, maybe we could ask our Public Works to look at that and see if that's an option of, we all know speed limits aren't gonna automatically make people drive slower, but it might encourage somebody to if there was a better sign there. And I've also been contacted about Jake breaking on County Road 315. I guess that's a noise ordinance issue, from what I was told by Public Works.
No, sir, it's a lot deeper than that. I with, you remember, you were here whenever I made the comment. Let's go ahead and do it and see if, let the sign police show up.
Yeah.
I was being a smartass, but there is a sign police, and they showed up and told us they were to take that sign down. And when we didn't take it down, they took it down for us.
Well, that.
And carried it to East Placa and dropped it off. So there is a sign police.
Well, I'm talking about County Road 315, County Road.
Well, I don't.
I know, I know, you were on State Water.
State Water 100.
100, so that's a little different, but.
There is statute, though, that says you can't do it.
Oh, is there? Okay. Is that, okay, never mind. That's all I got. Thank you.
Okay, alright, Commissioner Rawls?
I have nothing else.
Okay, alright, and I have nothing else. County Attorney?
No, sir, thank you.
Okay, County Administrator?
No, sir, I have no comments. Thank you.
Sure?
Am I supposed to have some comments, sir?
Twice in one day, it's like a.
Are you sure?
Something you need to talk.
Okay. Alright, okay, we'll move down to public comment on miscellaneous items. This portion of the agenda is designed to allow citizens an opportunity to bring matters to the attention of the board. It's not reasonable to expect that the board will engage in debate or deliberation on matters on which the board has received no prior information as part of the agenda. Please leave, limit your comments to three minutes, and if you'll speak clearly into the microphone, and give us your name and address for the record, please. And first speaker is Jeffrey.
Botiger.
Okay. Alright, welcome.
Mr. Chairman, honorable commissioners, my name's Jeffrey Botiger. I live at 102 Oak Leaf Point here in Palatka. And Senior Planner Quintus was kind enough to bring this to our attention recently, and this is, I'm gonna address some issues that we found in the Land Development Code, specifically 6.03, and then Section 03 of that, surface water protection requirements. There's a statement in here that rightly so moves to move septic systems a little further away from surface water boundaries than the Florida Department of Health currently enforces. Right now, Florida Department of Health has a 75-foot setback for an onsite sewage treatment and disposal system. That's a septic system, from this, what's called the ordinary high water line, or mean annual flood line of a pond, but that's the surface water boundary. For subdivisions that were recorded prior to 1972, which we have many, in fact, I got a list back here of, I think there's, we have over 100 subdivisions in Palatka that were recorded as in a plat date prior to 1972. At that time, the setback for the surface waters of the state were 50 feet. And on a regular basis, that's recognized here in Putnam County. And just a quick inquiry with the Department of Health right here, over the past three years, they've performed close to 100 what they call mean annual flood line determinations, where they go out and establish that line. And that would mean that when they're close enough, typically, we've issued permits over the past 20 years. If it were at three, at 100, so we're probably somewhere in the 1,000 range, where we've issued permits over the past 20 years that are within the 100-foot requirement that currently the Land Development Code requires, and went into effect in 2000, I believe it was in 2002, alright? So there's been an oversight at the Department of Health. Mr. Quintus was kind enough to point this out to us, and we need to bring it to your attention, because there needs to be some resolution to this. To, just immediately today, well, we're just gonna require everybody to be 100 feet, while three weeks ago, my neighbor got his permit at 50. It's gonna cause an issue. So we need to come up with, and there's, I just want this to, if we can move forward on some sort of agenda item in the future, and we'll work with Mr. Quintus on this. There's room in here for defining, or for perfecting the definition of these lots, or for allowing some grandfathering in these lots. There's certainly better systems to install that might go closer. The state is working on that now, where we've got these nitrogen-reducing treatment systems that can go into the ground. Most of them are aerobic treatment plants, they're about twice as expensive as a septic system. Most septic systems now are somewhere between $6,000 and $16,000. So we're talking about raising the price from 12, to 12, to $32,000, in that range. So it will impact our citizens, it will impact the work we do. I've been involved in this industry for 30 years. I started in 1989 in Fort Myers. I moved here in 1994. I was the Environmental Health Director, and oversaw the onsite program for about five years. And I've been a private consultant in the business in northeast Florida since then, and I write about 750 permits a year. So I'm very involved in it, and I've got great concerns about how we will approach this information that we've just found. Alright, I sure do appreciate your time.
Thank you, Commissioner Rawls.
I'd ask Mr. Botiger to come in, because he reached out to me for help on this issue, and with Dr. Gabriel, I realized that we've got a double set of standards here, the health department, 75 feet, Orlando because 100 feet. And Gabriel said, well, you know, if there was something offered, that would be different. And then I remember when I sat in here discussing B-maps and part of the solutions to not polluting our groundwater, part of the solution was having an organic mixture of.
Yeah, there's a, there's a product.
Fiber.
There's a, there's a plan, actually, it's in the rule right now, in our onsite rule right now, an in-ground, right, nitrogen-reducing system. It's experimental, it's in the rule, but we don't know they work really well, but it is a way, and it's been shown that if you can.
This is, you know, I said if.
There are ways.
Need a reason to change the LDC, what I'm concerned about is, if we have a lot that's 100, and we do, we have a lot of lots that are 100 feet. If you go over St. John's Harbor, over by Dunn's Creek, and off of.
Out west, yeah.
Every one of those folks, if they came in and bought an old mobile home and tore it down, would not be able to put a septic system in. And it's not Gabriel's fault. Gabriel's just lost his attention. But we've got this problem now, so I said, why don't you come in, talk to the commission, get them, see if we can have a meeting, a special meeting, or get it on an agenda to have a conversation regarding this issue.
Okay, alright, Commissioner Turner?
Well, I think what we've got to be very cognizant and careful of here is that, that we don't make our citizens have to put in a $32,000 septic tank, when a $12,000 septic tank will suffice. I understand this may be a little more environmentally conscious and what have you, but it's still 32,000 or 12. That's not much money if you say it real fast, but make it by tomorrow afternoon, and you'll see what I'm talking about. So, you know, I think we need to be very careful here about how we move forward, and when we do some of these changes, that we keep into consideration the people that it's gonna impact the most, which are the citizens of this county that pay the taxes. So, you know, maybe we can find something in the middle, maybe we can, maybe we can take some of these ambiguities between the Putnam County Health Department and the Land Development Code. When we go through this rewrite, we can look at some of them perhaps, and it's fixing to start here pretty quick. They've got a rank order on the firm, this guy, it's within the next not-too-long distance in the future. I believe they're gonna bring it to the board to accept one of the, of the proposals that was turned in. So we're getting close to doing this, and this is, this is exactly the type of thing that needs to be in the Land Development Code, and the kind of issues that we need to look at. And it's not just your issue, it's also, there's an arm's-length list of things that need to be gone through in the Land Development Code and fixed. And I could start naming them, but I'm not gonna bore everybody, but I'm gonna look for them in there when it starts going through. I'll give one, and then I'll quit. The one across Rice Creek, we just dealt with about a month ago. Right across Rice Creek, on the right-hand side, it's been a commercial trucking place for 30 years. They had history, they had zoning, and the land use map didn't have the pencil drawn around the property. It cost them people $15,000 plus to get the future land use map changed. That's wrong.
That's wrong.
That's just wrong. And so I'm telling you that what needs to happen, those are the kind of things we need to identify. They're in our Land Development Code and fix those issues as we move forward.
Maybe you can help.
Absolutely, yeah.
Okay, well, this.
That's what we need you to do, actually, is bring these out in the Land Development Code and point them out to Gabriel and the new, the, once we get the consulted in place, and we'll see what we can do to try to identify and fix some of your issues.
I appreciate that, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, and that will start with the Land Development Code process, then, correct?
I believe so, yes, sir.
Okay, so, you got his contact information, you'll be able to let him know, I guess, or somebody from the county can reach out? When we get to that point. Okay, okay, alright, thank you.
Looking for you, by the way.
Aye.
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you, sir.
Okay. Alright, any other public comment? Anything else come before this board? We stand adjourned.